I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion regarding the approval of minutes.
I'm second.
A motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Mendenhall to approve the minutes Tuesday, February 9th, 2016, the work session and the Tuesday, February 16th, 2016 formal meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. We will now move on to our public hearings. If you are interested in speaking about any of the two public hearings tonight, either the amending the Major Street Plan for the proposed road at 5700 West between California Avenue and 21st South, and the other public hearing is for the Northwest Quadrant Master Plan, there should be cards that you can fill out and then hand those into our staff person and they will get them to us. So, I would just ask that if, for those of you who are speaking, we, everyone will have two minutes to make their comments. For those of you listening, we try to make sure that we have a courteous and comfortable environment, so we ask that there be no cheering, booing, jeering, or any other noise from the audience. So, at this point, I do not see any cards for the first public hearing. Is any, would anyone like to speak about the Major Street Plan? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, may we close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting? Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, second by Councilmember Adams. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So, the next public hearing, I do have a couple of cards. This is regarding the Northwest Quadrant Master Plan. I'm going to read two names, so the first person, you don't come up, and then the second person just be ready. Ella Sorensen is the first card and Richard West is the second card. Thank you, Ms. Sorensen.
My name is Ella Sorensen, and for 25 years, I have been the manager of the National Audubon Society Gilmore Sanctuary. Actually, 25 years ago, the Gilmore Sanctuary did not exist, and it started with 107 acres being donated to National Audubon, and through the years, piece by piece, transaction by transaction, we have come up now to where we now manage 3,000 acres. We have 10 management units that we manage for birds and wildlife. They are in size from 13 acres to almost 350 acres. These are my different units, which we run water through old river channels. We also have 3,000 acre-feet of water. In the 25 years, millions and millions of dollars have been put in to build the sanctuary. There are a dozen different partners. There have been an enormous amount of labor put in on this. We have now built an absolutely incredible place for wildlife to be able to come. Wildlife on the Great Salt Lake, millions of birds go through the Great Salt Lake every year, and their habitat is becoming less and less and less. The Gilmore Sanctuary is adjacent to the Northwest Quadrant. Wayne Martenson and I, for years, have been working on the Northwest Quadrant. We've been through iteration, iteration. We have worked with the property owners. This current master plan, we have worked with the property owners to come up with a zone that has no development as a buffer to protect the investment that we've put in these, this wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sorensen. Richard West followed by Wayne Martenson.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm the president of an organization and association of landowners out along the South Shore, the Great Salt Lake. We have over 15,000 acres of land. And basically, I just wanted to say that we appreciated the Tracy and her staff, listening to the conservation community and their needs, and what we feel is best for not only folks, but also the wildlife that's out there. I do notice that the plant, one of the things that was important to us was getting the walking trails that were in the original plan of 10 years ago, taken out of that. I believe you folks did that, but on the website, you had the plan as it was drafted in late October, and these changes were made on the walking trails after that. So, given that that is going to happen, those trails are going to be taken out of there, that we would support the plan as drafted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Wayne Martenson followed by Chris Ginston.
My name is Wayne Martenson. I work as Utah Important Birdier as coordinator for National Audubon Society. Ella talked about the Gilmore Sanctuary. She also manages the Lee Creek area, and I have this brochure for people. Some of you saw this in December, not everybody. We are basically in support of the Northwest Quadrant Plan with the reservation that Dick mentioned about the trails being removed in the plan as it goes forward, since the October plan still mentions some of those trails. The Northwest Quadrant Plan's goals and vision are great in regards to the protecting the nature, the unique nature of the site and the sensitive areas, and the inclusion of the natural areas and zoning for an eco-industrial area north of I-80 are important components of the Northwest Quadrant Plan. As Dick and Ella mentioned, we've worked long and hard with people to get to the point where we are with this plan. We're supportive of it as it's written and as we expect it to be amended. One of the items that the City Council has been concerned about is access and trails, and I just want to address that briefly. The brochure I passed out for the Lee Creek area is just about a mile to the west of 8800 West. That's open all of the time during daylight hours for access to the Great Salt Lake, managed by Ella and National Audubon Society. There are visitations that are allowed to the Inland Sea Shorebird Reserve and to the South Shore Reserve on a case-by-case basis. The Greenway areas, as the Northwest Quadrant Plan develops, are open and intended for trails, and in these natural areas, we feel very strongly should not be for access, except controlled access into these natural areas, to be defined at a later point with the landowners so that we can protect the sensitive areas to the north for the duck clubs and for the Gilmore Sanctuary and for the Inland Sea Shorebird Reserve on the west.
Time.
So, overall, thanks very much for the good efforts on this plan.
Thank you, Mr. Martenson. Chris Ginston followed by D.J. Williams, and D.J.'s card is the last card that I have, so if anyone else would like to speak, just fill the card out.
I just wanted to give some support for trails in the master plan. I guess I'm a believer in the more people who use the area, the more people will value the area, the more people will work to protect the area. So, if more people can use it, more people can enjoy it, it might be protected longer and better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ginston. D.J. Williams, again, if anyone else would like to speak, just fill the card out and hand it to our staff person.
Thank you. I was here in December talking about the bike and pedestrian trail, and we mentioned, we talked about the Northwest Quadrant Plan. My name is D.J. Williams. I am a board member with the Utah Waterfowl Association and also represent the Harrison Reclamation Company, which is a landowner just north of the Northwest Quadrant, and just want to pile on, so to speak, with what Ella and Wayne and Dick have talked about. There are trails out there in the green areas. The native areas and the natural areas were designed as a buffer to the waterfowl and the, especially the nesting waterfowl and the other animals that are out there and wildlife are very sensitive to continual encroachment, and that's what's going to happen out there in the Northwest Quadrant. And so, these natural areas were designed as a buffer to protect the sensitive nature of waterfowl nesting and also of other wildlife. So, there is the green areas. There are many other opportunities for people to go out and enjoy that area, but we, as we have talked about and as we think has been approved, there are to be no trails in the natural areas to act as this buffer, and we would urge the council to entertain a motion to approve the Northwest Quadrant Master Plan by removing any mention of trails on pages 13 and 26, as well as what Wayne has suggested as far as the landowner being able to control any type of access into there. So, really appreciate the council's work on this, and really appreciate all the work that has went into the Northwest Quadrant. It's very important to the landowners out there as well as the waterfowl and wildlife species. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Seeing no further cards or interest in speaking, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we close the public hearing and defer action to a future council meeting. I'd like to talk, to speak to, I have a couple of questions, actually. If, there's a second.
Do we have a second? First?
My second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Johnston. Councilmember Penfold.
I just, is there somebody here representing planning staff on this issue tonight? Nora, could I, Mr. Chair, is it okay if I just ask a couple of clarifications and questions? Nora, I know that we've received some of the input from tonight and are planning to make modifications. I also noticed in the most recent handout I have of the area that there still are some changes to be made to the eco-industrial, rather than having that large space, having it more of a defined ribbon space around the border. Are those, is that something you're working on before we see the final, final?
We've been talked, we have been talking about that a little bit internally, and I, Councilwoman Rogers has indicated that we might want to look at some alternative language that identifies that buffer areas, you can, eco-industrial and maybe leave open for further discussion, what kinds of industrial uses really make sense in that area. There's certainly an area that we think it's important to have some tight development standards for, particularly the area closest to the natural area.
Right.
But we are open to working with whomever, the state and property owners and everybody else, as we move forward with the zoning on this, and...
So, as a follow-up, then, we would expect to see some unique new zoning prepared, because these are new concepts.
Yes.
So, I appreciate the innovation of that eco-industrial, and I do believe that your assessment is right, there's a market for that. I think we've got too much of a swath of that currently showing in our plan, and I know we'll debate that more when we come to the zoning portion of this, which is the continuation of that. But I would appreciate a map that maybe revised some of that, because it's a pretty significant swath of that current developable property out there, so...
Yeah, there's 6,000 acres in developable land out there, so that's a lot, so we can accommodate all different kinds of uses.
Thanks, Nora.
And we can soften the language in the plan a little bit and then come up with a revised map.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but the timing for adoption on this, because we do have some, I know that we have some changes that everyone was supporting that are getting incorporated into our final draft. When do we expect to see that? Or maybe staff can help with that, with that? Final draft before us by...
We could probably have it done within a week. We've been working on it.
Okay. So...
Nick? Sorry, Mr. Chair. I just saw Nick, and he had some clarifications, I think.
Hi.
Maybe best just to be safe, we should aim for April, because the public hearing would be, or the next opportunity would be the 15th, and...
And I appreciate that, and we, our deadline has passed for that transmittal, so, and April, April is fine. I was just looking for a projection, so I appreciate that.
sooner rather than later, but April works.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions, and I really wanted to thank the planning department and our staff for the work they've done on this proposal, and I look forward to adopting this sometime in April.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. City.
Our city attorney was just mentioning, we should clarify, are you closing? Was that motion to close?
My motion was to close the public hearing, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. So, the motion to close the public hearing and defer action to a later date, and a second by Councilmember Johnston. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So, before we move to item C, the potential action items, we've been joined by Mayor Biskupski, and so we'll go back on our agenda a little bit. The mayor is going to present recommendations to the council regarding proposed commercial development block grant funding, as well as emergency shelter grant funding, home investment partnerships program funding, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS funding budgets.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Because the mayor's voice is gone, I'm channeling her tonight, so there are a few comments here that she would like to make, and I'll do so on her behalf.
Correct.
The mayor is pleased to be here to present the 2016-2017 One Year Action Plan funding recommendations for your consideration. These recommendations reflect the funding allocated through home, the community development block grants, emergency solution grants, and housing opportunities for people with HIV/AIDS. These federal dollars help support the critical needs of our community. Such needs range from the maintenance and care of our parks to basic needs of shelter and access to food. Each year, funding decreases, and such decisions are increasingly difficult to make. For this funding cycle, there was nearly $9 million in requests from over 40 different agencies, and yet the amount that we have to allocate is just over $5.5 million. Each application, each program, and each project add value to our community. The diligent effort the applicants put forth through this process speaks to their commitment and professionalism in continuing to make Salt Lake City livable for all residents. While we cannot fund every application, the mayor would like to recognize their valuable service and leadership in helping underserved communities. In an effort to maximize funding and impact, the mayor and the board have aligned the recommendations with the consolidated plan. As a reminder, the consolidated plan was created over the span of two years with tremendous community input. This plan continues to be our guide as we respond to the crucial needs of the community while holding agencies accountable for outcomes and impacts. As she passes these recommendations on to this council, she'd like to recognize the hard work of the hand team, and especially the committed work of the Community Development Capital Improvement Board. That board reviews, contemplates, and evaluates each application within the context of the community. Their dedication to the city is evident, and their expertise is valued. Thank you for your time and thoughtful considerations as you review and make final recommendations for this funding.
Thank you very much, Chief of Staff Larry, and Mayor Biskupski, for those comments. We will now move forward, back to item, our agenda. Item C, potential action items. The first on our list is approving the issuance of, and sale of up to $10 million lease revenue bonds of the LBA and SLC funding for fire station number 14.
Mr. Chair, I beat him. Yes.
I love so doing these.
Councilmember Rogers.
I'll just do C1, Stan. I'll make it easy for you. I move that the City Council adopt the resolution approving the lease revenue bonds of the local building authority of Salt Lake City, Utah.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Penfold. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, Stan.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recess as the City Council reconvenes at the Board of Directors of the Local Building Authority.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are convened as the Board of Directors of the Local Building Authority.
Mr. Chair, I move as the Board of Directors that we adopt the minutes of February 2nd, 2016, of the Local Building Authority of Salt Lake City.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I further move that, as the Board of Directors, we adopt the resolution approving the lease revenue bonds of the Local Building Authority of Salt Lake City.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, finally, I move that we adjourn as the Board of Directors of the Local Building Authority and reconvene as the City Council.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And we are reconvened as the City Council. So, at this point, we will answer any questions or comments to the City Council. Again, if you are interested in speaking, please fill out a yellow card and hand it to our staff person. Again, the rules of decorum are the same as during our public hearings. We just ask for courteous participation, no cheering, jeering, or booing. We just want to make sure that the environment is as friendly as possible for the individuals addressing the council. The one card that I have is from Mr. Douglas Cocteau.
I want to ask the City Council if I can talk about some sensitive personal information. Is that all right, or what?
Sure. You have two minutes.
All right, okay, two minutes. Okay. Today being March 1st, it was 21 years ago tonight that my wife, Mary, survived her cancer operation, and before she went into surgery, myself and another LDS elder gave her a blessing. And after she recovered from the surgery, we took her to a, one of those homes for those who were recuperating from illness. And then, on March 31st of 1995, we brought her home from the hospital. She collapsed on the front step, this was in South Salt Lake, and then they brought her into the house and put her, put her on her bed, and one of the paramedics came out and said, "Where is her husband?" And I said, "Yes. Is there anything wrong?" He said, "She has passed away." And I was, I was hoping that I could talk about this without getting, without getting emotional. I have a picture of her in my wallet, and I just felt the need to talk about her. I'm sorry if I upset the City Council.
You did not upset the City Council, Mr. Cocteau. We appreciate you sharing that story with us, and our thoughts are with you of this difficulty.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I have a moment of personal privilege?
Councilmember Mendenhall, personal privilege.
Just previous to this section in our agenda, we approved $10 million for a fire station without batting an eye, because there's a process that goes into that, and this is one of many, many steps. But I want to thank Mr. Cocteau. He joins us almost every single Tuesday and shares his thoughts about the city and what it's like to be a resident in our city, and I guess I just want to say that when we lose someone we love, sometimes the desire to bring them into the community that we're in and the people we talk to on a regular basis just comes up. So, we welcome you here, and I'll be thinking of your wife tonight, and thanks for joining us, Douglas. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mendenhall. The next card is from Elliot Christensen, and if there is anyone else who would like to speak, step forward and then make sure you fill a card out after. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you. Elliot Christensen, I'm president of the North Point Consolidated Irrigation Company, which is a non-salaried lifelong assignment, and I've also served eight years on the City Public Utilities Board in past years, and some of you may be familiar with my brother, Carlton, who I'm not profess to be too, too much of a politician like he is, but I had property, just, I received notice of the closure of the 5700 West Street, and the Mountain View Freeway will be coming through instead of that 5700 West alignment. But I thought it might be helpful, since I've managed the 5,000 acres out here for over 35 years, to give you an overview of how the transportation plan could evolve over time. I was approached by Vern Jorgensen originally to annex this area to Salt Lake City. It was about 10,000 acres that we put together, and the developable area is bordered by the Gog and Drain on the northeast end in blue, and that's larger than the Jordan River, and it's a huge, huge waterway that separates the 10,000 acres of wetlands that we service with our, our water company. The airport, Salt Lake City's mitigation site here, National Audubon up here, Kennecott Shorebird Reserve at 88th West. Here you see the proposed prison site, which, the site in and of itself is quite environmentally sound. There's very little wetland on it, other than our canal that trespass, passes through there. Here's the Kennecott Tailing's Pond at 8800 West, so it's basically the Magna Dress. So, as Mountain View comes up to I-80, you'll see that there's a possibility, rather than a dead-ending at Interstate 80, the Mountain View will probably carry as much truck traffic as I-15 eventually, that there would be, as this develops industrially, there would be a potential to bring an extension of the Mountain View, 5700 West alignment further, further north.
Mr. Christensen, if you could wrap up your comments.
All right. And I've also shown another possible alignment to come out to the prison site. So, rather than just a rectangular fashion like we have at the Salt Lake International Center, I would encourage the transportation people to look at some curvilinear fields, because this is seven times larger than the Draper prison site.
Great.
Could I leave this with somebody?
Yes, actually, if you could leave it with Mr. Bedard here. Mr. Christensen, thank you very much for your time. Ray Wheeler, I do have a card from Ray Wheeler, and if there's anyone else who would like to speak, just let me know. Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you. Sorry to be a little late for the discussion of the West Side Master Plan, but I do have comments about that. Appreciate you squeezing me in. Some of you may know that we had a complete rollover of our Glendale Community Council recently, when the general membership voted to remove all board members of the current council, and I would suggest to you that that's because the demographics and the values and the priorities of our communities are changing on the west side. We've changed dramatically in demographics. We have a lot more minority people. We have a lot more young professionals buying starter homes for incredible values on the west side, and these people are bringing different value systems, including a much stronger green and environmental protection ethic. So, I want to speak to the West Side Master Plan in that regard. It devotes only three paragraphs to a cursory discussion of protecting open space and wildlife habitat along the Jordan River. It does mention the need for better connectivity between the rivers surrounding neighborhoods and the rest of the city, but it does not adequately assess the potential or adequately plan- plan for the potential future of restoring natural ecosystems, native plants, stream bank condition, water quality, wildlife habitat, especially for the living stream of thousands of migratory birds, hundreds of thousands, that cross our city twice every year on a transcontinental commute across two continents. I have developed a plan with help from sixteen endorsing environmental groups and many stakeholders, including many city, county, and state staff and departments, to fully restore natural values along the Jordan River corridor, and in doing so, redevelop the economy of the entire west side of Salt Lake City. Companies that employ people with the kind of skills that allow them to do disruptive technology development want to live in cities that protect their natural assets. So I have copied this plan to all of you. Several of you have come down the river last year with us, and you are all invited to do so again this summer. We're going to have a whole series of trips on the river to bring the public to the river and introduce you to this plan, and I would ask you to add this thirty-six-page plan as an appendix to the existing West Side Master Plan and fully endorse it as a city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. The last card that I have is from Curtis Linton. Curtis?
Hi, council and mayor. Thank you for giving me these few moments here. I want to speak specifically to the shooting incident Saturday night and to the protests and the march last night. And I attended the march. It was an incredibly impactful experience. What I really ask the city to engage in is an honest acknowledgement of the passion, the sincerity that the protesters, the marchers, the people involved in the incident have expressed. And I have to speak from my own personal experience. I'm white. I grew up in a very middle-class environment. I was raised with a deep understanding that police just provide protection. You can always trust them, and if I'm in trouble, it's probably just because I did something wrong. That's a privilege that I carry, and so as we think about reaching out across the city and really recognizing that, you know, as you look at this council, everyone is white. We come at it with a unique perspective, different from the people involved in the incident Saturday night. So what needs to happen, you know, as the city engages in a true courageous conversation about race, listening, examining whiteness on a path towards creating true bonds and understanding across the different neighborhoods and communities? So I ask that the city really look at this, be very honest about this approach. My professional career, as some of you know, has been in education. There are schools that have taken on this process very successfully and have been able to see significant success at eliminating racial disparity. Cities can do the same. No city in the U.S. has truly taken this on. As we look at, you know, the shootings that continue to happen across the nation, Salt Lake City is a unique position. It's a small city. It's a connected city. It's a city that doesn't have years and years of serious problems and division. So can this city take this on and truly make this an inclusive city? You know, Salt Lake City makes great strides with inclusiveness of sexual orientation. The next step is race. I encourage the city to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Linton. Having no further cards and seeing no further interest in speaking, we will move to Item E on our agenda, new business. We have four items up for action tonight.
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Mendenhall.
I move that the council adopt a resolution authorizing a grant from the Salt Lake City Housing Trust Fund to the Road Home for the House 20 project.
Second.
Mr. Chair, that was substitute motion.
Okay. First motion by Councilmember Mendenhall, second by Councilmember Penfold.
Or a friendly amendment.
Okay, so the friendly amendment suggestion from Councilmember Rogers.
Would be that we suspend the rules and adopt.
Okay. So with friendly amendment from Councilmember Rogers, would anyone else like to speak to Councilmember Mendenhall's motion?
We need a second on it.
Uh, Stan.
Wait, you good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item two, or number two, Director Appointment of Public Utilities, Laura Briefer. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we suspend the rules and, I guess it's consent, to the director position of Laura Briefer as Public Utilities Director.
A second.
Okay, motion of consent by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, Director Briefer. Number three, Director Appointment of Public Services, April Townsend. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we suspend the rules and appoint April Townsend as the Director of Public Services.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion to this consent appointment? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Director Council. The fourth item, Director Appointment for Community and Economic Development Director, Mike Reberg.
Mr. Chair, I move we suspend the rules and consent to the appointment of Director Reberg to Community and Economic Development.
Motion of consent by Councilmember Mendenhall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kitchen. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Councilmember Adams.
I will support this appointment, but it is with a little bit of reluctance, because this is being called the Community and Economic Development job. The mayor this afternoon clarified that really it will be community, and it's a placeholder for economic development. So we didn't really ask Mr. Reberg any questions about economic development, but he's a placeholder in economic development, and I'm concerned that we need someone who's the actual Economic Development Director. We've got a great interim director, but I would urge the mayor to have someone take that on and determine the direction we're going with this. I'm comfortable with the community part of Mr. Reberg's work, but I don't think we really vetted him at all for economic development, so it's, I'll support it, but it's with some hesitation.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Director Reberg, congratulations. Move to Item F, unfinished business.
Mr. Chair, I would move we adopt a resolution adopting the updated Salt Lake City comprehensive housing policy.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion to this motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item G on our agenda is our consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move we adopt the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Penfold, second by Councilmember Mendenhall. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is adopted, motion passes, and we are adjourned. I know, but I had, I warned.